Today's date is March 28, 2016. I ask that we all please rise for the salute to the flag. Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Lamberg?
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Mindy.
Board members should have all received in their Friday packet minutes from the regular meeting on March 14, 2016. Do all board members have those minutes and do you have any questions, suggestions, or edits? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of the minutes from the March 14, 2016, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lamberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. Tonight, we are very fortunate to have award winners from both Polk and Judson School with us this evening, and we'd like to welcome you all here to a board meeting. For some of you, it's your first time here, and I'm sure if it is, it will not be your last. We don't just invite anybody to come to the Board of Education meetings. This is a special occasion because collectively, we are all extremely proud of your accomplishments. So, we would like to congratulate the following Polk and Judson students. Each student is a Golden Bucket Award winner who was recognized for his or her excellence in citizenship for the month of February. Dr. Cardamola is going to call your name up. You're going to come up and take a certificate from me and shake Dr. Cardamola's hand, and then we're going to ask you to just stand to the side with your certificate. And once that side gets filled up, we'll start on this side, but we'll remind you as we move forward. Okay? So, Dr. Cardamola?
Thank you. So, we'll start with our Judson students. In grade three, we have Christina Mette. Also, in grade three, Nathan Oon. Grade four, Jason Hannes. Grade four, Julia Conard. Grade five, Sophia Quadrado. And we have fifth graders with us from Polk Care tonight, Mattinglee Creeter. Wait, Nathan, can you stay with us for a minute so we can get a picture? I'm almost done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nathan. Also, grade five, Jack Geis. Congratulations, Jack. Great job, Jack. Benjamin Schweyer. Also, grade five, Sarah Cox. Congratulations, Sarah. Yep, that's what she told me. Abby Gallagher in grade five. Congratulations. One more fifth grader from Judson, Luca Maroli. Congratulations, Luca. Okay, so we'll take a picture. If I have Mrs. Scully and Mrs. Beckety.
Why don't you join together so the two of you walk forward to the middle?
Now you come to the middle. Yeah, we might have to push it a little more. This is just for your parents' pictures, okay? So, we have a science for this, okay? Parents, we look to the left, then we look in the middle, then we look to the right. Everybody gets a good picture. So, to the left, everybody. Everybody look to the left. The middle? Okay, to the right. Everybody get what they wanted? Congratulations. See, that was easy. Thank you for coming.
We are very fortunate this evening to have multiple awards to give out, and at Polk School, we have three special area award winners. In the month of February, three students were recognized for outstanding dedication in the disciplines of music, art, and physical education, and we would like to congratulate all of them. Dr. Cardamola will call your name up, and we'd ask that you just step to the side with your certificate when you're done.
Okay. Again, grade three, Sebastian Creeter for fiscal education. I thought I saw Sebastian. Okay. Grade four, music, Giselle Baranowski. And grade four, art, Nicholas Mancini. All right, it's just us, Giselle.
Giselle? You get a personalized photograph. She might even autograph it for you. Congratulations to all of our award winners for being recognized by the Board of Education. We are going to continue with our meeting. We have a very exciting meeting ahead. I'm sure you all want to stay. We won't take any offense if any of you have to leave, but we are going to go ahead and continue. So, again, congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you here again soon. Moving on to item F, report from Student Council Representative Karina Mancini.
Good evening. Here are this week's school updates. John Trumbull Primary School took part in March Madness fundraising, which included a paint night, a raffle, and an online auction, which all raised over $5,000. Also, over 400 family members were in attendance last week at the kids inviting someone special event during the John Trumbull Book Fair. Continuing with the theme of family fun, Polk and Judson hosted a combined family fun day at Roller Magic, which was a huge success and fun for everyone involved. On Thursday, March 24, author Dana Mechen visited Polk to attend a lunch and book signing with a group of fifth graders. The Student Council at Judson is currently hosting a March of Dimes fundraiser, where students purchase sham rocks for a dime, and the winning grade level is, will win a pizza party. Also, a walking club for students and parents with Mr. Serrero has begun on Wednesday mornings before school. Swift's Leo Club and Student Council hosted a three-on-three basketball tournament on March 18 to support the V Foundation, and over $1,400 were raised. Student Council's annual Dr. Seuss Party was held on Monday, March 7, with games, crafts, and snacks for the children. At the high school, the Spring Musical Footloose completed a great show with three sold-out nights. Also, the Nogatuck Valley Community College On-Site Decision Day went very well, with about 30 students attending and accepted for the fall semester.
Thank you, Karina. Moving on to our first round of public participation. Would any members of the public like to address the board this evening? Would any members of the public like to address the board this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports, curriculum and instruction. Mrs. Rinaldi?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you very much. Vic, policy and labor?
No report.
Okay. Mr. Lamberg, budget and finance?
No report at this time.
And back to you for facilities and operations.
Also, no report.
Thank you. Mr. McCowsky, governance?
No report at this time.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Wilk, is there anything in communications to report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item J, superintendent's recommendations and report. Dr. Cardamola?
Thank you. A few of the appointments I'd just like to point out. Unfortunately, we had Jennifer Geis here with us tonight because her son received an award, but I'm pointing this out because this was unfortunately a person who had been reduced from their position as a reduction in force shortly after I became the superintendent, when we had to cut the million dollars out of the budget that failed twice. And so, we're happy that we've been able to bring Jen back into work for the district as the secretary in the Special Education Department for the supervisor. So, that was exciting. I think she actually started today was her first day. Also, as you see, we have a nurse appointed at John Trumbull Primary School, which is very exciting news after as long as it has taken to be able to find someone qualified who also wanted to work in the district instead of the hospital, for example. So, we're excited for the start of Nadine DeGraca. Also, you see, it's a little bit of an end of an era as Sue Galpin transfers from being the head secretary at Swift. And really, it was a joint head secretary position between Sue and Tanya. That's also something that had been longstanding as a result of when Hemingway Park was closed years ago. Tanya and Sue ended up in the same place. Now, Sue is coming here at the high school to be the head secretary for the retirement, after the retirement of Kathy Williams. So, we're able to move forward differently here and resolve what had been a longstanding issue also from a school closure. So, just those few things that we are excited about moving forward. Also, I'd like to put in my two cents about Footloose. I came up and saw it on Thursday, and once again, it was fantastic. I think anyone who was here that saw it knows what a great job the kids did. I think we're probably headed for another Halo Award. Knock on wood, I hope that's where they're headed, but it looked to me like it was certainly a possibility. Just well done from start to finish, and the kids worked really hard on it. It was really obvious, if you were able to see that. I was out in the schools quite a bit in the last two weeks. I haven't, the last two weeks have been not complete full-day visits with many other things going on, as you know, in part to get ready for the budget meeting, for example, last Thursday. So, I've been splitting some time between schools, spending a few hours in places instead of the entire day, is the way that it has been going lately. I was at, I was at Polk, I was at the high school. If I remember right, sometime along the way, I was, I was at Judson. I'm back at John Trumbull this Thursday, hoping that will at least be most of the day now that some of the other budget things have settled down. I had office hours at the Watertown Library last week. I didn't have anyone officially come to visit me, but I did, I was able to interact with quite a number of people that happened to be in the library, which is another reason that I do it. So, that was good. Also, thank you to the senior center who invited me to come down on St. Patrick's Day and have lunch with the seniors. That's always, that's always an exciting time for a number of reasons, especially on St. Patrick's Day. It's pretty well-attended. There is a, I'll send it out if it hasn't come already, there's a memorial service, a Vietnam Memorial Service this Wednesday on the Oakville Green at 12 noon. That's sponsored by the VFW that we are going to make an attempt to attend. I have it on, on my calendar. If any of you are available, or certainly kind of reminders for the public that if we're able to go, that would be well-accepted by the VFW. We've tried to support them when they've done the memorials here in town. And that is it for my report piece.
Thank you, Dr. Cardamola. As you know, we need you for most of the rest of the meeting, including the next discussion, so don't go far. Item K, discussion regarding the non-renewal of non-tenured teachers. As, as board members are aware, or most of them are aware, that Connecticut state law requires that non-tenured teachers whose contracts are not being renewed have to be notified by May 1 of the contract year of the impending possible non-renewal of their contract based on a budget passing or not passing. Following the board approval to non-renew the non-tenured teachers, those letters would go out. I'd like to have Dr. Cardamola speak to that for a moment.
As Mrs. Crady said, this is something that we have done for at least three years that I know of at this point. I went out and met with all of those teachers who would receive one of those letters over the course of last week and other reasons. I was involved in some other things that cut my school visits short, but I feel that it's important to sit and explain to them what the process looks like and not have it be that they find out of it as, as a result of an action that the board took here tonight. So, I had already let the union know that I would be coming out. We had had that conversation. They're used to the way this works. At this point, it is any, basically, for the most part, it's any teacher less than four years. However, there are some possible changes to that. For example, if someone worked in another district before they came here, they are tenured more quickly by state law, and then it's typically after two years. So, it's, it's a mix of who might be in the room. They're not all necessarily new teachers, if you will. They just are new to our district at least in two years, and some are obviously brand-new. So, I met in each school with the group of teachers who would receive the letter, a person from the union, and the administrators, and explained the process to them. They asked any questions that they had, and honestly, for as well-received as that can be, it was well-received because I, for the most part, honestly assured them that this is not where, what we would be looking to cut as a district or even as the Board of Education, because as you know, we're, we're fairly lean in staff as it is from replacing some of it over the past two years, and also because there are places where we are adding staff in also as a cost-saving measure and another piece of the budget. So, I told them that as much as I could help them to put aside their fears, that's what I was there to do, and to just understand that we had to do it as a matter of budget protocol. And I think they understand that, and it's pretty much the exact same conversation I had last year at the same time of year, and there were many people in the room who had already been there once for it and also, you know, spoke to it, about it to other people. I think that honestly, the worst part is from after tonight, and I, and I explained that to everyone in the room too, because what happens if the board makes this, takes this action tonight, they get a letter from me that says they have been non-renewed. Thank you for your service in Watertown. And from the time they get that letter until they get the letter that rescinds that after we take another action here, that's a, that's a bit of time that I think is difficult on people, no matter what you tell them, what they have in writing is a letter that says that. And honestly, I spoke about that in these meetings too. So, it's the best I can do with what the situation is.
I have to tell you that I know that the board appreciates you taking the time to speak to the staff personally. It's not something that you have to do, certainly not required of you, but your time and efforts to personally reach out to each one of them is appreciated because these letters tend to send a very difficult message, and to have it softened and completely understood by them because of your visit is greatly appreciated. None of us likes to do that, and we are all very happy when the budget passes and we can rescind all of those letters. So, thank you for taking the extra time to do that.
Thank you.
Moving on to item agenda L, presentation. Tonight, Jeff Turner, our Director of Technology and Data Services is here for an update on our school information system. As the board is aware, we are transitioning from using our current management system, Infinite Campus, to Power School. Jeff, thank you for being here tonight to walk us through it.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. A short presentation on Power School. So, Power School is a school information system, and a school information system is basically the lifeblood of your school system. It is your grading, it is your scheduling, it is all your data. It's really everything that goes in from a teacher perspective, from your student perspective, and from your parent perspective. So, if you would like to read the long-twin-ed version, Management Information System for Schools to Manage Student Data. It is the input and output. It is how we put in the grades, how we get the grades out, how we show them on transcripts, report cards, everything that comes and goes within a school system. Power School right now is the most widely-used school information system going. It's about 40 million people who are presently using it in the USA and many countries outside of the USA as well. It's pretty much eight points that I'd like to talk about very quickly. Number one, it is easy to use. Just one slide for this. Really, it's an all-in-one system. The students are the center of all data. If you're a parent, you're able to see everything, including up-to-date, real-time data as a teacher puts in their information. So, if you have a grade on Wednesday afternoon, 30 seconds later, it's available on your portal. You have parents who are able to go in and see everything a student sees except for one extra thing, where parents can actually design reports. I have a 10th grader right now at Danbury High School. Every Monday morning, I have it set so I don't have to go looking for it. I don't have to ask my daughter, "How are your grades?" She knows every Monday morning, I get it at 10 o'clock in the morning. So, when I'm asking her, I'm already telling her, "I know what the grades are. Do you want to tell me something before I see it Sunday morning, or Monday morning, sorry?" So, parents will have one choice that students don't have, and that is to be able to set up how they want to see that data. You can go on daily, you can go on hourly, you can go in once a month, it doesn't matter. But you can set those reports for weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly, and/or other options as they become available. Administrators, there's going to be three different views for administrators. We're going to have secretarial and administration, we're going to have teachers, and then we're also going to have the tweeners. And the tweeners are people who might be slight administration, but also might only need to input maybe two or three different types of fields. So, I'll be able to actually go in and set security depending on how we want those folks to be able to view data, if we want them to see certain things, as well as being able to go in and set it so that we can make fields actually appear and disappear depending on the security. So, compliant. Number one thing with compliance is everything that goes to the state reports. So, we go in, we talk about PSIS, which is done in October, January, and it's done in June. All those reports, the data is kept throughout Power School, and the nice thing is Mrs. Roy, who does it at Munson House right now, can actually run these reports ahead of time. So, she could test them monthly and see how things are going, find mistakes, and actually talk to the school secretaries about what do we have to get done before we run this for real. So, it allows you to run it, see it in real-time data. SACID, which is the register, un-register, and change, that's the data that's going to go, for example, seniors become graduate students, and our 11th graders become seniors. It's a rollover data. It's also the time when we start having children who are registering new, pre-K, kindergarten, any children coming from outside, we put them into our system, as well as students, for example, if we have children going to Nanowog for the Voag program, we'll start moving them over to that school system as well. And that, again, also is something we can do ahead of time. One of the examples I had for that, I'll talk about later. The 166 is the discipline report. It used to be you had to do that quarterly. At this point, you can actually set it up so it runs any time you want and put the data in, monthly, weekly, however you want to do it, so you don't have all this data at the end of a trimester or a quarter. You can actually put it in as you go. So, it's really much easier as the data's put in. Civil rights data collection is the biggest thing, along with TCS. Those are done every other year for the civil rights. That one is really tough because you have to collect everything from teachers and grades for all students, as well as the TCS, which is done for every grade level. So, if you have quarters, trimesters, semesters, year-long grades, all these are collected by the state of Connecticut, and then they put them into a huge database. But again, it allows you to do it in piecemeal instead of having these huge reports at the end of the year. Third thing is real-time data. Real-time data is exactly what it's talking about. It's instant access. As soon as an administrator puts in a disciplinary action, as soon as we put in a grade, a attendance for period three, a parent can see it right away. So, if you're wondering if your child's there period four, you can see it right away. Along with the real access is assignment-level details. And what that means is you can actually go from a gradebook to go to specific grades themselves and see what it was about. As teachers get into this, they'll be able to go in and read the description of the lesson. You can see any links that the kids were given to assess. It might even have the actual assessment itself there, as well as the grade itself. So, teachers, as they get into this, will be able to store things so that next year, if they want to use an anchor paper, they can save things, they can go in and save, test themselves, and actually go back and get them from the previous year. Next thing. Parent portal includes 18 translations and a very diverse community that we have. We have a lot of different languages spoken. So, it's nice to be able to have folks to be able to go in and feel comfortable reading and understanding what their children are getting as grades. Flexible. And the flexibility is simply put, what I kind of brought up earlier, designing. Most databases are one or the other. It's in the front end, you can see, but you can't touch. Power School allows you to actually go in, and I can design custom pages. For example, one of the things on demographics is social security number, which we don't collect. I can actually hide that field. A lot of them are, what you see is what you get. In Power School, I can actually go in and design, create, and separate things that we don't need. If there's a field we need, create a custom page, use that data, and I can actually use it in reports as well. So, it's not just a matter of storing the data, but also having an output for it. Standards-based report cards, as well as traditional report cards. Everything that we have currently, I'll be transferring over and cleaning up with the principals, the administrators. I do have the ability to actually write the code for this, so we won't be farming this out. All the cost will be incurred throughout, just through me, and 95% of it, I'll be able to take. Standards-based will be, I believe, John Trumbull still will be the only school that has that. So, I'll be working on the standards with Mrs. Mecca. And then for the traditional report cards, I'll just be working with the principals, rewriting them, maybe adding some, some flair to them to make them a little nicer, maybe adding a little more data as we go through. We'll be working on that for the next three to four months. First report card is probably due at the end of October this year, so I have a few months to play with it. But what we will be doing is testing, using this year's data to test those report cards, and especially with the transcripts, so it'll be the first thing that I work on, because we have our seniors who will be starting to, upcoming seniors, who will want that data by the end of September to get out to colleges. New thing this year, which is one of the biggies, is store your important records. You could actually now store data. We can take things such as enrollment information. When folks come in to enroll, they have to show proof of residency. We can now store that within the database. We can store report cards, we can store any data that we decide is something we want to keep for later on. Transcripts, for example. Right now, we keep transcripts in QUM folders. It's not a quick way to do it, it's not the easiest way. So, if I'm at home, I can actually print it, send it to a network printer, and send it to the school for whoever needs it right away. So, if there's no secretary, there's no principal at work that day, I can work from wherever I'm at and send that data right to that person, or send it right to their email address. So, we'll have that kind of data ready to go. Student-focused. Best way to say it is, if you want to see it, you can find a way to get it. Your iPad, your iPhone, your computer, your laptop, your Chromebook, there is a way to get to all data for parents, teachers, and students, as well as administrators. So, as long as you have the data, you have the login, you're good to go. It really comes down to, do you want to use it? It does work with Android, it does work with Apple, there's no device that it does not have a portal for. Data-driven, near and dear to my heart. It's where I spend a lot of time. Just a couple of examples. There's hundreds of things I could show you, I don't want to bore you too much with it. But if you look at the screen fairly quickly, just reviewing past attendance, a teacher can go in and see long-term, over a two-week, a month. You depend, you basically tell me how you want to see this, but you can set data ahead of time. If we know we're going to have a field trip, I can set that up to three days ahead of time, so I don't have to have the guy, the secretary at the office do it, the teacher can do it. We can have things done up to three days after the fact if there's any errors. The good thing with this database with attendance is I can always dump the data, fix it, put it right back in, whereas databases that we're currently using, not as easy to do. Data validation, also a biggie. This will be where secretaries and I become very good friends. We're going to have a monthly to-do list where I'm going to ask them, and the first year, I won't, won't tell you anything but the truth here, the first year, there's a lot of cleaning to do. Going through and finding is the mom field and the dad field, is the address up-to-date, is the data what we want. Perfect. I want to get it into that 98, 99 percentile. Something's always going to change, but we should be in the high 99s. The data, every month, I will have a checklist for people, and basically, what I do every week is I go to a different school every day, so I get to know everybody who's working there as well as working in the classrooms. But one of my big projects for the next six months to, actually, the next year and a half, will be getting the secretarial and the administration onboard, understanding what I'm there for, as well as doing all the training. have a portal for. Data-driven, near and dear to my heart. It's where I spend a lot of time. Just a couple of examples. There's hundreds of things I could show you, I don't want to bore you too much with it. But if you look at the screen fairly quickly, just reviewing past attendance. A teacher can go in and see, long-term, over a two-week, a month, you depend, you basically tell me how you want to see this, but you can set data ahead of time. If we know we're going to have a field trip, I can set that up to three days ahead of time. So I don't have to have the guy, the secretary at the office do it, the teacher can do it. We can have things done up to three days after the fact, if there's any errors. The good thing with this database with attendance is, I can always dump the data, fix it, put it right back in. Whereas databases that we're currently using, not as easy to do. Data validation, also a biggie. This will be where secretaries and I become very good friends. We're going to have a monthly to-do list, where I'm going to ask them, and the first year, I won't tell you anything but the truth here, the first year, there's a lot of cleaning to do. Going through and finding is the mom field and the dad field, is the address up-to-date, is the data what we want. Perfect. I want to get it into that 98, 99 percentile. Something's always going to change, but we should be in the high 99s. The data, every month, I will have a checklist for people, and basically, what I do every week is, I go to a different school every day. So I get to know everybody who's working there, as well as working in the classrooms. But one of my big projects for the next six months to, actually, the next year and a half, will be getting the secretarial and the administration onboard, understanding what I'm there for, as well as doing all the training. So it's going to be one-on-one, small group, large group, I'll do PD for teachers, whatever is needed to be done. But the key thing, and as well as parents, being able to change the data from your website, and being able to get it in within a 24-hour, without anybody else having to touch it. Numbers of the click. I think you'll find, a lot of things are pretty quick to see, but the best one, I think, is being able to go, again, going back to Mrs. Roy, looking at data, the administrators. That moment, you need to see, "How many children do I have?" This is a great screen for it. It actually breaks it down by grade level, by your race, and/or by gender. And you can see that. And if you click the number that it represents, you can see, blue is for boys, pink is for girls, you can break that down. Once you have that list, so if I want 9th grade girls, I can then go to the main screen, pick that list of, say, there's 472 girls who fit that description. I can then say, "I want to know the city equals Oakville." And I want to say, "Street contains Birch." And I can break down all those kids into that level, within 30 seconds to a minute, I have that data right at my hand. Very simple, easy to find. Great for emergencies. If we have a bus accident, I can go in and find the bus, but I can also look by street, in case there's a secondary reason to look for it. Attendance summary, again, near and dear to our heart. Administrators, right away where that 94% is, can tell what teachers took attendance within that period they're supposed to take it. Whether they have meeting or daily, and we'll discuss that later on another time. And there's two types of data, it really is. The daily is for state reports. The meeting is really middle school and high school, as they have different classes going on. The elementaries will pretty much take a daily only. But attendance summary, at your will, and a report, you just print out daily, you do weekly, monthly, however you want to do it, and if you don't like what's there, I can design something for you. Discipline trends, again, mostly middle school and high school. But you can see right away by the state mandated reporting, what's going on in your school? What are you seeing a lot of? Maybe you have to have a discussion with counselors, this and that, but this gives you that starting point. And then finally, the last two, open and connected. This is a biggie for me. This is one of the few databases that is wide open. They allow third parties to design software. And right now, there's a couple of great examples. One of them is InfoSnap. In a previous district, I think I paid almost $9,000 to use this software. Power School bought it within the last year and is only charging, they give you a free version, which is a mini version, which you can use for registrations, things of that nature. But if you want the full-blown product, it's only $2,500. Just a huge difference in the price. And in all honesty, if you take just the mailing that you have to do for summer, that pays for the price right there. Previous district I worked at, we would do all our mailings electronically. Less time for the secretaries, better up-to-date information, and we just pushed it out. Just in mailing costs, you can save the money right there. There are, they just came out last month with an assessment program that we're going to look at once we get it up and running, so I'll add that as well. But again, high cost separate, but within the program, it's a lot cheaper. So we will also have a third thing, which is really neat. A lot of the people that use Power School, and 80% of the schools do use it, they have these meetings that they talk, maybe every two months or so, but a lot of folks will write their own software. So a lot of the things that have comes, has come to Power School in the last couple of years, has been through the Connecticut user group, or a user group in Vermont and Michigan are very strong. And a lot of the software's coming out for free first. There's locker programs, there's all this stuff I can go ahead and use, and again, I decide, not the software company deciding if I use it or not. And finally, the most important one is cost-effective. In the last five years, the average cost for the program we're presently using has been $46,174. The last four years, started a year afterwards with the food service cost, it was $8,851. This is just taking the five years of the cost, dividing it by five. Power School, after implementation this year, will be a set cost of $21,968, and it will be reduced each year, because if our student population goes down, it's $4.75 per child that we pay for. So it will go down, they pretty much leave it as a set cost, but they look at our database once a year and see if it's reduced. And then they'll give us that savings. Third-party food service, set price will be $21,080 a year, using a nationally-known program that a lot of school systems are already presently using. So the savings is going to be $30,949 a year. Think of it as this, three Chromebook carts, new wireless over a five-year period in every school, that's pretty much what that's going to cost. Or you could look at a whole computer lab each year that's being reintroduced into your schools because of the savings. So we go back through savings through innovation. We're getting a product that's more useful in the way that we're looking to use it, and we're saving that money and putting it back into our students' hands. And last question would be, do you have any questions for me, please?
Do board members have any questions? Mr. Lambert?
Jeff, you have used this system before at your other...
I've had six years of experience, yes, sir.
You sound like a cheerleader for this.
You know, I've used three different systems. I used Reddicker, which was the first system that I actually was as administrator with, and I was very happy with it. Previous district, my superintendent at the time said, "I'm not happy with it." And he had me go through committee. We talked about how and what was available. And the program just stuck out. There's only four or five really good programs out there. And really, there's two or three that are really for regular public schools. A lot of the smaller ones are for parochial schools, or for charter schools, because they also do a lot with money, things of that nature. So really, it comes down to the two or three. And when you look at it, this database is the only one that is really open, so that you can make changes to the way you want to use it. The one we're presently using is not as visually acceptable. It's just, you really have to understand databases to make it work. And it's a great program. It does some things in the background that Power School will not do. But we're not taking advantage of any of the tools that are presently there. And it's, the best correlation I could say, Mr. Lambert, is, sometimes it's better to leave the house to clean it up than to clean up the whole house. And in this case, we're going to find a lot of things, and a lot of questions are going to come from, "How are we doing business, and how can we clean it up to make things better for us?"
Do they have a maintenance program, or a program that can be developed for maintenance reporting? Facility side?
It's a good question. Not presently, it is a school-student database. Could it be? Yes, and I'd have to look for third-party stuff. So something like SchoolDude has that, yes. SchoolDude has that, it's a database, yeah. So could it, yeah, I could create some custom stuff and make those fields available, that would be fairly easy to do.
Thank you very much. You're happy? I'm happy.
Any other board members have questions?
Yes, through the chair. Jeff, thank you for the presentation. I am a big fan of Power School. Just one question, I know that you will be the person overall that is managing the system. You, and I love it, I love the fact that students and parents, you can create your own restrictions and stuff like that. My one hang-up with it is, there going to be some holdbacks, like for consistency stake, like if you, for the high school, I know parents want to see for one class, this teacher is sending them out hourly or by the class. Do we want to set it, like to have it say, "Okay, on Mon-" like you said, on Mondays, the grades will come out, so there's, just in case for error, so you don't have parents being like, "Oh, my God, and the teacher made a mistake," and... Just as a district or as a school?
Have you used Power School recently?
I, I wanted Power School.
Okay. Three, four years ago, it was set up, actually, when you used Admin+. How it was set was, teachers were given a time, and you had to have the data in.
And I used, yeah.
And this is real-time data. So if a teacher's doing it at 8:00 at night, at 8:01, it's there.
It's there.
It really comes down to management by the administrators and the teachers. And the thing it does allow me to do, for example, right now, we're not doing pre-K through 5. We're not really using the portal. I don't have to show things such as a gradebook on the elementary school, but middle school and high school, I can. I have the choice of any option that's there, I can show it or don't show it, or I can go to the third-party software and add other pieces that aren't presently there. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So I have the option, through the administrators, making that decision for me.
Okay.
But even the pre-K through 5, a couple of the nice tools are, school bulletins, you can put it out so that everybody has it. There are certain tools that are great, the demographic information, a parent can change it in the portal, and we have it the next day, ready to go. So for security, it's much safer. So we don't have to call the secretary, who then writes it down on a sticky note, who then gets it in a day later, because they're so busy doing other things. We have that data real-time.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other board members have questions?
I do.
Mr. McCoskey?
Thank you, Mr. Turner. That was a great presentation. And the data analytics is near and dear to my heart, because it's kind of what I do. And I love the ability to export and analyze the data for our students and things like that. But I'm interested in, can we flip it around, and parents that are accessing the portal or things like that, do we have the ability to look at data on usage by parents, so that we can understand the engagement that this technology has with our parents?
The administrators have a view where it's called access, and you can see who's logged in when. But it's not, the data's kind of hard to measure, because you could turn on your computer and leave it for four hours and come back, it'll show a four-hour window that it was actually logged in.
But you, can you, can you see, we had, you know, 200 individuals...
Oh, absolutely. Sadly enough, 11:00 at night in my past district, I would be on doing certain things, and I could see teachers, parents, students, who were logged in at that time, checking their portals. So you have data there, administrators would have that, very few other people would be able to see that. But again, as we go through the administrative portion, we'll really have a lot of conversations about who needs to see what. Things such as free and reduced lunches, something very few people should ever see. So very few people will have rights to that. So it really comes down to that first year, cleaning, making the security rights, going through, sitting with people, and making sure that they can't get to certain pages.
Yeah, I'm looking at it from the aspect from a parent engagement. So if we, if we can see, over time, an increase in, you know, the, whatever the schedule is, an increase in users on it, then we can see that education efforts to have parents go in and check their children's attendance, check their children's grades, check their behavior records, those things. That means we're helping get more parents engaged with their students, which is going to result in greater success by more students. So, thank you.
And the answer to that would be, yes, there is data there, it just, it's not straight data, yeah, it depends on how you want to look at it. Yes, it is there.
Great, thank you.
Any other board members?
I do have a question.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I was just wondering, with what has to be reported to the state, is this going to help things?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And I also have done six years of state reporting, so I'll be working with Mrs. Roy, who's very good at what she does. And I'll just be a secondary person. And one of the key things, I think Ms. Wilk asked, I will run it. For the first couple, I figure for the first year and a half, two years, I will really oversee it. But my main goal is to build others into this program, so that we have six, seven, eight people, so that we're not relying on one person. It has to be a team effort across the board. We have to have administrative, secretarial, teachers who are interested. It's a great thing to have on your resume in the first place, but a great way to learn, especially if you're working on your O9-2 and you want to be an administrator, it's a great way to understand the different views in the data and how you can use those tools. So I will be building rapport with other folks and asking for volunteers, people who want to learn how to use this, and showing them as I go.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
You'll have to forgive me, because I'm so excited about Power School that, much to probably her dismay, I was online, looking at videos, looking at, talking to some parents in other districts that have it. Nothing but accolades for the program, but a lot comes down to how it's administered and how the training goes. We certainly understand that the first few months, if not a year, will be, there'll be a little bit of a learning curve and kinks to work out on our end. I have a couple of questions. One is, I noticed that they have a Power School special education module. Does that come with this, where you can track the IEPs and upload all of that kind of data?
We presently use IEP Direct, so right now, as soon as Ms. Swaby has a change in IEP, it will automatically show up. And instead of having the thick IEP of 97 pages, you only get the data that needs to be seen to a teacher. So in all honesty, only seeing what they need to see. And again, real-time data, as soon as this change in IEP Direct, it goes right to their teacher-gradebook. And what we'll have are designations within, same we have now, where it shows if an IEP is there or not, so that teachers know to go check it.
From what I understand, that teachers that have been using it for some time are able to go in, they get real savvy with it, and they're able to really take a look at the progress of a specific class, or on a specific subject, and actually be able to design their own reports to show, okay, how did that unit really go over, and what kinds of problems were its children having with that unit? And really take a hard look at the student progress over time and adapt to that. So I'm very happy about that aspect as well. I think Rob's point about the community engagement is really big. The mobile app is exceptional. I'm very happy to say goodbye to Infinite Campus, it has served us well, but I think it's time to move on. So I thank you for bringing, helping bring this to our school, and for presenting it to us this evening.
And if you need me for anything else, please ask.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Dr. Cardamola, do you have anything to add?
One thing I would add regarding the budget piece of it, this is another example of, when we started down this path, actually, two years ago, we didn't do it as a cost savings. That was something that came along after, that we realized we could have cost savings by changing the platform for food service and the POS there also. That said, we didn't talk about this in any of the budgeting for this year, because the cost savings won't be realized in '16, '17, because we have to pay to implement it to begin with. So we're steady on the cost until the '17, '18 year, when we start to realize the savings. Also, I think one of the things that's important is that Jeff's point about training folks and making sure that there are a number of people in the district that are savvy with Power School is incredibly important to us, because one of the issues that we have faced with Infinite Campus is that there were so few people in the end that truly knew how to do a lot with it. And it's not necessarily as intuitive to work with, in some ways, as Power School is. And so you truly had to understand a lot of the background programming and so on, to be able to run some of the reports, for example, that are much easier with Power School. And many of those people are no longer with us. They're not in my, they're not at Central Office, and they're not in the schools. And so as we moved forward, we needed more training from Infinite Campus that was very expensive. If we were going to continue down this path, and paying for individual training to happen, to go out to Infinite Campus to do it, it still would have ended up more than even this initial year of switchover. And so as Jeff said, it was, let's cut the cord, not pay for anyone else to go and be trained, do the switchover now, while we're in a place that it's easier to start at ground level. Program the system the way that we want it, get everyone that we want trained, do a lot of our own training in-house, because many of us can do that. I'm from a Power School background, Mrs. Brown's from a Power School background, Dr. Parlatto's from a Power School background. And that's not to say that the decision was made simply because the upper administration knew the program. The decision was made, actually, because of what it could do for us. And now we also have the resources and the people working here to make sure enough people can use it properly. And it is the most-used database in the state of Connecticut. So the chances are, even if the worst-case scenario happened, and it was none of us that were here at some point, chances are, the people that came to replace us would know how to use it. As opposed to Infinite Campus, where I believe there are seven, seven districts in the state out of 169 that use it. So, it's harder to find people that are experts in Infinite Campus.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Okay. Going to move to item M, report from the board chair. This evening, I have just a couple of comments I wanted to share with the board and with the public. You know, this past week and a half has been quite wonderful in a lot of ways as a board member to sit in the audience of Footloose and see our talented musicians and actors and actresses and stage crew and lighting, and the amount of volunteer staff that was there, and the amount of community members that came out over a three-day period. To see Footloose is a great example of what our students are doing at Watertown High School and how much the community is benefiting from that. To look out in line and see people coming almost an hour early, not because there's a bad seat in the house, but just to be sure they get, they get in, and also to talk to their fellow community members. There were young children, there was a fair amount of elderly population, you had every age and demographic in the audience enjoying it, and having seen multiple musicals and plays here, I was impressed, as always, by the production that was put on. I'd also like to speak to the second thing that was probably my second, if not the first favorite part of my week as a board member, and that would, I, I am referring to the job that Dr. Cartamola did in presenting the board's budget to the town council last Thursday evening. If you have not had the opportunity to see it, you may view it online under the town website, and I would encourage you to do so. The overwhelmingly supportive comments that were made by the town council is a true reflection of the work that Dr. Cartamola and her administration have done to build an understanding between the town and the Board of Education on the budget process and all that we are doing to improve it, and to hear town council members, after many, many years of not being aligned in our goals, to hear them speak so positively about the budget and the goals of our district and the work that Dr. Cartamola and her team is doing, as a board member sitting there was, was incredible to hear. Having seen many of those in the past and heard from my fellow colleagues on the board that have been here before me what types of meetings those usually turn into, having seen a few myself over the years, it did not go unnoticed. I thought it was a very fine example of culmination of two years of a superintendent coming to our district and working to bring in all the stakeholders in our community together to have a clean understanding of what we're trying to do and what our goals are for the students in Watertown and Oakville. It's also the first time I've ever seen sixteen, excuse me, eighteen elected officials, that's all of us on the board and all of the town council members, be in unison in terms of their support for a budget and the things that the school district would like to do. One thing that spoke volumes to me, and Mr. Lambert and I had some time to talk about this, is that the questions that town council members were asking showed that they were understanding our process now, that they have more information than they had the year before and the year before that in regards to what it takes to build a budget and what we are doing behind the scenes to accomplish that. And to hear them ask questions of that nature was, it was very telling for me, and I want to thank Dr. Cartamola for representing our board in that way, not only at, on Thursday's meeting, but for the past two years. It was quite an accomplishment, so thank you. I'm looking forward to moving forward in the budget process, as I'm sure everybody is, and I also want to thank all the community members and staff and faculty that came out to support the budget and Dr. Cartamola. We've got a lot of important things to do, and moving on in the budget process is definitely on top of the list, so, thank you. Moving forward, I'd like to turn our attention to the action items for this evening. First one is a consideration of the approval of an out-of-town field trip to Waterford, Connecticut. Do board members have any questions about that field trip? You did receive the request in your packet on Friday. Okay. I entertain a motion for the field trip to Waterford, Connecticut.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of an out-of-town field trip to Waterford, Connecticut for ten Watertown High School students in six chaperones from May tenth, two thousand and sixteen through May twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, for the purpose of providing the students with an opportunity to demonstrate their independence, age-appropriate social behaviors, and daily living skills in an authentic context.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item two, consideration of the approval of an out-of-country field trip to Spain. Before I ask for the motion on this field trip, I'd like to just give a little history for those of you who are unaware. Dr. Cartamola, please fill in the blanks with your knowledge as well. We've had a out-of-the-country field trip every year for certain students within the high school. They switch off going to various places in and out of Europe over the years. It's been a wonderful educational and cultural opportunity for our students, and our faculty has been amazing in providing that opportunity to them. Dr. Cartamola, would you agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, with the current trends in what's going on outside of the country right now, I'm sure a lot of parents are concerned, as are we as parents and board members as well, with students traveling out of the country. However, we have before us a, a request to consider a field trip to Spain that would take place next year, April of two thousand and seventeen, and it is before the board because we feel that it has a strong educational value and that, at this time, we would say that the parents have the opportunity to decide whether or not they would like their students to attend. I would also, before I ask for the motion, suggest that perhaps down the road, we have a, a conversation as a board in regards to our policies with out-of-country field trips moving forward. Does anybody have anything to add to that?
No, I agree.
Mr. Mikowski?
I do have one quick question. With events such as, or with, with events such as this, who does the district consult with in regards to safety and security for things such as this? Just curious what our process procedure is.
Two, two things. Via the State Department's emergency management system that sends alerts and information to me as the superintendent, if they are related to travel, I will get them. Also, we will consult with our board council prior to the, the trip actually taking place, and, and we have done that in the past too, when there have been any possible issues out of the country, even, even if I don't receive any notification from the State Department.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Anybody else? Okay. I'd like for a motion, like to ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the request for an out-of-country field trip to Madrid. Is it Grenada, Seville? It's...
Grenada, yeah. Grenada.
Grenada. Seville, Barcelona, Spain, for approximately twenty Watertown High School students in three chaperones from April seventh, two thousand and seventeen, through April seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
Yes, I second it.
Thank you, Vic. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item three, consideration to approve the non-renewal of non-tenured teachers. We discussed this earlier. I would ask for a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of the non-renewal of non-tenured teachers based upon the possible need for a reduction in force, and that the employees affected be notified in writing prior to May one, two thousand and sixteen, in accordance with Connecticut state law.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda letter O, future agenda items and board member comments. Do board members have any future agenda items to suggest or comments they wish to make at this time? Okay, we come to our last round of public participation, item P. Do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Please state your name, address, and topic of discussion.
Fran Palmer, two twenty Middlebury Road. Just off the top of my head, listening to Mr. Turner's explanation of the new Power School, there needs to be a concentrated effort getting parents involved. You're mentioning parents who do get involved. I have portals that have not been entered all year. We've given out two report cards, they haven't even gotten those. So, there needs to be some sort of a parent involvement education on, on the system. Teacher training, we're overwhelmed now with a million things. I don't know where you're going to find the time and the two days before school starts to get people on board. I assume it's over a long period of time, but again, the, the training is going to have to be detailed and to the point. A lot of us, I mean, I'm old-school, it's hard for me even to get into a lot of the areas in Infinite Campus, and then switching over to a new system, it will be a challenge for some teachers. As you mentioned, a lot of teachers may have already been trained on it, it's intuitive, and that's good, but it will be that switchover period that's going to be difficult. Again, this is off the top of my head. The electronic notification that was mentioned, again, I have parents who do not respond to emails, don't have email, don't check their email, have their internet turned off, so there's a facet of the population that's going to have to be considered. Will the teachers be involved in what is available on the Power School that would be important to us? A lot of it, I'm sure, is intuitive, but there may be that conversation between the teachers. And right now, we have the teacher webpages and all of that part of it that's, we have those class, I'm, I'm never checked in on, on the Power School, so I'm not sure what all it has, but we do have our webpages where we can contact directly with our parents. They can see what we're doing, those of us that keep it up, and just wondering if that's going to be involved too. Just some, just ideas.
Okay. Thank you very much for your questions and for sharing your feelings on the matter. We appreciate it very much, Mrs. Palmer.
Mr. Turner, did you come out because you wanted to respond to any of that because...
Just in case you wanted me to respond to anything, you happen to do that?
Um... I don't... Yeah. I think what's important to, to state is that this has been, as I said, a, a, a long process for us behind the scenes. We're not rolling this out willy-nilly. I think you can tell that from the presentation that Mr. Turner just gave. So, what the training will look like for teachers, when it will be delivered, and the training that's already begun for some of the most important support personnel has been well-thought-out and, and has a timeline. I know this is what you would say if I told you to come up to the microphone, that the training for teachers is much less involved than it is for the administrators and the people who do scheduling.
Less than an hour is all teachers will be...
Right.
It's really picking a pen and setting up your grade book. You want your grade book set up one year, you're teaching the same class the next year. You can literally copy everything from previous year for your grade setups to the next year. It's very simple process.
As far as the webpages are concerned, I, they're not linked to Infinite Campus, so that's a, that's a district decision whether or not they're left there, plus having the bulletins through Power School. We have been also talking about how we might be able to push on with parents logging in and so on. One of the things that we have talked about is the fact that we'll be pushing back out those usernames and passwords and instructions and running some parent information sessions again. To be perfectly honest, however, the parent, there'll be the many parents who don't come out for the parent information sessions, and so that's some of what we are talking about, what that looks like, trying to get others involved. And just like with any other notification, we never rely solely online because we, we are sensitive to the fact that we have individuals that don't have internet access, so we do what, one of the things we do behind the scenes is survey that through parents and, and students and find out who needs paper copies still sent home. So, for example, we see they're not logging in, they get them sent home.
We can also do a simple search for mother and father, his or email address in this field.